Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, August the 6th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm looking for any declaration of conflicts today. Okay? Go ahead, folks. If you just wanted to clear your conflict, we'll start with Jackie, move on to Rosemary, and then go on to Chris after that.
Conflict with the community fridge application.
Okay, thank you. Rosemary?
Also with the community fridge.
Okay, thank you.
Also with the community fridge.
Okay, all right, so we have three conflicts for the community fridge. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And if we have no other conflicts of interest, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I will let you know that we're slightly changing the order of the agenda. And variant, item number one and two, and and then we'll move on to number four. Then we'll do McKinnon and Morrow, the last two, that will be Sonia and David. So does that make sense to everybody? So if I can have an approval of the amended agenda, moved by Bobby, seconded by Counselor McKay. And just as a sidebar, I'll let you know that we have Sin online this evening, and as well as Counselor Beck. Can I have an adoption of the minutes from our last meeting of July 18th? Moved by Paul, seconded by Chris, all those in favor? Thank you. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we will move right on to our reports. So our first report is 62 Sherwood Road, and our Manager of Development Planning, David Gundrum, is here to give the report. Over to you, David, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff. Okay, so the following application is a request for major variance. Just, Jason, do you mind doing the slides if I, when I tell you? Oh, it's okay. No, the remote's not working, no. Oh, it's working now. Good, thank you. So again, the following application is a request for major variance to maximum permitted height to allow for a five-story, 75-unit apartment building on the subject property identified as 62 Sherwood Road, PID number 455642, to allow for a maximum built height of up to 18.17 meters or 59.62 feet within the C2 zone. Subject property is shown on the screen here as highlighted in red. The property is located on the south side of Sherwood Road, which is a primary east-west connector road in the city of Charlottetown. Property is located within the highway commercial C2 zone, is adjacent to established residential, commercial, and industrial land uses, which include apartments to the north on this parcel here, commercial warehousing to the east in the M3 zone here, and vacant parcels of land to the south. And to the west is an electrical substation owned by Maritime Electric. As far as legislative requirements are concerned, in accordance with Section 3.9 of the Zonion Development Bylaw, on June 27th, 2024, written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meters of the subject property. Total of seven letters were sent to residents to advise them of the application to solicit comments and feedback. No written responses from members of the public were received in response to our circulation. However, in response to the application, circulation to city departments and outside public agencies, we did receive responses and technical comments from City Public Works as well as Maritime Electric. This slide details the concerns that were raised by City Public Works and Maritime Electric at that time. I will note that this application was previously deferred at the last meeting of Planning Board, and that since that time, we've had follow-ups with both department and public agency. So during a subsequent meeting held on August 1st, among Public Works staff and the developer, it was confirmed with Public Works that they are accepting of the proposed road access for the development from Sherwood Road, and that they have no further concerns at this point in time. And during a site visit with Maritime Electric staff and the developer on July 25th, it was confirmed that the drainage impacts to nearby electrical substation are not emanating from the proposed development site. The developer has confirmed that their intention as per submitted designs is for stormwater drainage to be directed to the north toward Sherwood Road. Maritime Electric staff were accepting of this approach and expressed no further concerns with the proposed development at this point in time. This is a, on the screen, a site plan of the proposed development concept. Shown, the new building is located to the south here, with a new access to the east of the existing apartment buildings, which are shown here. And parking for the development would be immediately to the west of the building, with a limited number of spots directly north of the building shown here. And one of the concerns that was raised by Public Works initially was concern for connection to a future road network connection between Sherwood Road and Mina Jane Drive to the south. I will note for Planning Board's information, this has been confirmed with Public Works staff, that the proposed road access would not compromise this potential future road network connection into the future. And partially for that reason, Public Works is accepting of the proposal at this point in time, given the proposed road access. In terms of our review, some positives for the development, that it utilizes existing vacant undeveloped land. The property is in proximity to compatible apartment development of a similar size and scale to what's being proposed on the subject property. Some neutral comments are that the development requires building and development, a permit upon variance approval, and would require property utility servicing to the lot. And the previous shortcomings that regarded access concerns by Public Works and concerns for stormwater drainage onto the Maritime Electric substation have subsequently been resolved. So on that note, Planning and Heritage Department is encouraging Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property at 62 Sherwood Road, PID 455642, be approved to increase the maximum allowable building height from 15 meters or 49.2 feet to be approximately 18.17 meters, 59.62 feet, to allow for a 75-unit, five-story apartment building to be constructed on the subject property, 62 Sherwood Road, PID 455642. So that's the summary of the application and our recommendation to the board, and I'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your report. Any questions from Planning Board? Counselor Beck, do you have any questions?
No, it's fine with me, I guess. I was just, no, it's fine. Road access has been resolved, so that's good.
Great. What about you, Sin?
No, Madam Chair, it's, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. So we have a recommendation from the department to encourage the Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property located at 62 Sherwood Road, PID 455642, be approved. Do I have somebody that would like to put that on the floor as a resolution? Moved by Lee and seconded by Paul. So the resolution is on the floor. Does anybody have any questions about the resolution?
I, could I just have one clarification, just sort of something came to mind?
Sure, sure, Counselor Beck.
If I understand, currently there will be an access road from Sherwood Road that will come into this new unit. And then the extender, there's an agreement, so this connector road or whatever is there so that whenever the time does come up, it will hook to that new extension that is being put in there. So everything is in place for that connector to happen later on. I just want to get that clarified, just to make sure that that is in fact the case. David, maybe through the chair, could you answer that question for me?
I think it is, I think the answer is yes, it is. But David, if you want to go ahead and answer as well, but I'm pretty sure that that is the case.
Through the chair, Counselor Beck, that's correct. Like, the access that's being proposed, as shown by the developers, would not compromise the ability for that future road network connection into the future. There'll have to be some negotiation about, you know, timing and how that gets built and how the city absorbs that cost perhaps. But the access that's being proposed today and the position of the building would not compromise 60-foot road allowance through that area to connect down to Mina Jane Drive.
Great, thank you.
And thank you, David, for that clarification. Sin, do you have any questions on the recommendation that's on the floor before we vote?
No questions.
Okay, so we can call, and all those in favor of moving us on to accept staff's recommendation? Anybody opposed? Counselor Beck and Sin, are you both in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Wonderful, thank you for that. Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda. That will be, again, a report by our Manager of Development Planning, David Gundrum. And it is for a site-specific exemption request. So I'll turn it over to you, David. This is, this is for, yes, site-specific exemption for Valley Street, 46 Valley Street. Yep, for, so for those folks that are in conflict, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through the chair, the following application is a request to permit a community fridge as an accessory use within the parking zone P for the unaddressed property identified as PID 358218. As per Section 43.1 of the Zonion Development Bylaw, only a parking lot and a parking structure are permitted uses within the parking zone P. Subject property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Valley Street and Connolly Street, as highlighted in the image on the screen shown here. Subject property is located within the parking zone P and is adjacent to an established residential area to the south and the west and the east, as well as a commercial uses which are found to the north. The plaza is shown here across the street, across Connolly Street. Property contains a surface parking lot with space for approximately 30 vehicles. And subject property is owned by the Parkdale Sherwood Lions Club, which operate a community hall on property across the street at 46 Valley Street, shown here. PID 358481, shown here. Again, the permitted uses under the parking zone P, as highlighted in blue on the screen here for the subject property, include only a parking lot and parking structure. With respect to our legislative requirements, in accordance with Section 3.10.4 of the Zonion Development Bylaw, on May 7th, 2024, City Council approved the request to proceed to public consultation. On July 5th of 2024, written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meters or 328 feet of the subject property. In total, 56 letters were sent to residents advising them of the public meeting to solicit their comments and feedback. A total of 46 written responses were received by the Planning Department. 29 responses in support, 14 in opposition, and three that would be classified as neutral, neither expressing support nor opposition. That's a duplicate. Just one other thing I'll note, sorry, this slide was copied by mistake. The public meeting was held on July 17th of 2024. And at that meeting, council asked questions and points of clarification regarding the application. Also, members of the public were invited to attend and speak at the public meeting. The feedback which resulted from the public meeting on July 17th, and I'll just run through the summary here. Some comments in support, the existing use provides an accessible and stigma-free, low-barrier option to address food insecurity in the community. Existing property is an underutilized site from a land use perspective. The existing use is in a centralized location, which is transit-supported, making it conveniently accessible for users of the service. Some comments provided at the public meeting in opposition include, "The presence of the use on the subject property has encouraged loitering and trespassing in the area, which has impacted the quiet enjoyment of neighboring residential properties." "The proposed use should be relocated to a different site containing a principal land use where regular monitoring of operations could occur to deter misuse." Some further comments that were received at the public meeting in support. "Proposed use is fulfilling an identified community need to address food insecurity." And some other comments that were in opposition include, "Local residents who live in immediate proximity to the site have cited safety concerns during all hours of the day from users of the site. Police have been called on many occasions to try and address the situation." And it was noted, another comment in opposition, that a sensitive use, being a childcare center, is located directly across the road from the proposed use, which has reported to have been subject to negative spillover effects and impacts from the land use. In terms of our analysis of the application, a summary of positive, neutral, and negative attributes or shortcomings. On the positive side, the proposed use would help to address and alleviate demand for access to food by vulnerable populations in the city. The proposed use would be located within an established neighborhood and close to downtown, where many residents live who may need access to the service. Neutral comment would be that the use was established outside of any planning approvals and has been present on the site for approximately three years. Some shortcomings of the proposal. The use does not conform with the intent and purpose of the parking zone P, which is intended to only allow for the temporary parking of vehicles on the site. And during its period of operation, abutting and nearby residential land uses have been reported to be negatively impacted on an ongoing basis by the land use. With respect to the official plan, it's noted that the subject property is not currently subject to a land use designation within the city's OP, and therefore consistency with the official plan cannot be evaluated based on the lack of an assigned land use designation. The objectives of the official plan cannot be applied due to the lack, this lack of land use designation, and as well, the objectives of the OP would typically not be applied through a limited zone such as the parking zone P. With respect to the city's zoning bylaw, subject property is noted as within the parking zone P, which limits permitted land uses to a parking lot and parking structures only. A community service use operated by a charitable or nonprofit organization, such as a community fridge, is not a form of permanent use that is typical of a property within this zone, nor is it a type of land use that would generally or normally be considered under this zone, given the intent and purpose of the zone, which is to permit the temporary parking of motor vehicles only. The general intent and purpose of zones within the Zonion Development Bylaw are to control for land use impacts among and within abutting or adjacent parcels of land, and to ensure that new uses will be wholly compatible with their surroundings in order to avoid and not cause undue negative impacts on account of their presence or associated activities to other nearby land uses. Through the public consultation, ongoing land use conflicts and nuisance conflicts and nuisances have been reported by neighboring residential landowners with respect to the community fridge, as well as incompatibilities with adjacent land uses. Uh, so in conclusion, and this is reading from our planning report, uh, while the site identified as PID three-five-eight-two-one-eight represents a limited opportunity for consideration of a community service use within an established neighborhood that would be in proximity to the downtown core, the use is not consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning that applies to the site, which limits land use to a parking lot and parking structures only. The zoning for the subject property therefore intends for the site to be used only as a location for the temporary parking of vehicles, and nothing beyond that in terms of permitted land use. Uh, based on the feedback received at the public meeting on July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, it has been made known by area residents, some of whom live on properties that either directly abut or are in close proximity to the site, that the presence of the community fridge on the subject property has been causing negative impacts to the quiet and peaceful enjoyment of their properties for some time, uh, due to its presence in operation. It's noted that the community fridge has been in operation on the subject property for approximately three years, where these noted impacts have been ongoing, and they are therefore based on a substantial observed period of operation by neighborhood members. And, uh, based on our, uh, and, uh, review of the application, our recommendation to the board, uh, the Planning Heritage Department encourages that Planning Board recommend to council to deny the request to allow for a site-specific exemption in the parking zone P as it pertains to the unaddressed property identified as PID three-five-eight-two-one-eight that would allow for a community fridge as a permanent accessory use on the subject property, whereas a community fridge is not otherwise permitted. Our recommendation, uh, to deny the request is based on the following planning rationale. Uh, number one, the proposed accessory land use, community fridge, is not in keeping with the intent and purpose of the parking zone P as it regards intended or permitted land uses, land uses for the site. Number two, the presence of the proposed accessory land use, community fridge, has had negative and deleterious effects on abutting and adjacent residential land uses in the surrounding neighborhood due to its physical location and configuration. And number three, the proposed accessory land use, uh, community fridge, is not desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land within the parking zone P, given the reported nuisances and impacts that have been reported by neighboring land use owners on an ongoing basis. And that is a summary of the application, our recommendation to the board, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your report. I'll just open it up to, um, the board. Does anybody have, go ahead, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, and thank you, David, for your report. I know when we're dealing with these issues, it's not always easy to be so cut and dry. But I, with the official plan in front of us and other applications that I know are going to be coming forward in the future, looking for site-specific, uh, applications and maybe spaces that aren't so appropriate, um, I am prepared to support, uh, staff's recommendation. I do feel the community fridge is a good project. What they're intending to do and what they are trying to do for the community is something that deserves value. Um, and I also value the efforts that Sandra and her team have, have put forward. I know the Lions have been a supporter, and that's kind of how this whole thing started. That blue space, that is permitted use, that the Lions also own? Is that correct? I just want to clarify.
Yes, it is.
So they, there is land use that would be considered permitted to avoid all this as an option. And I know that there's been lots of discussion because this tugged on many people's heartstrings around different, uh, you know, areas that might diminish some of the safety and problematic concerns identified. And I'm just hoping that by supporting this application, if it doesn't get to stay where it is, that we might be able to provide support, whether it's, give them some extended time here to relocate if this is what's important to this group. Um, I don't know if we can ask that, but I will be prepared to support the recommendation of staff.
Um, thank you for that, Counselor McCabe. Um, David, do you have any comments on, um, anything Counselor McCabe had? There weren't really any direct questions per se, except for perhaps, um, giving a limited amount of time, if the board decides to support staff's recommendation, to have the, the folks that run this fridge, um, um, seek new locations, if that's what they plan to do?
Uh, through the chair, uh, Chair Yankoff to address Counselor McCabe's question. Um, my answer would be that you, you can't condition a zoning approval or zoning denial for that matter. Like, we, the recommendation is to deny, and, um, I'm not of, I'm not of knowledge that you can legally apply conditions for, uh, a timing on that, that, when that denial actually triggers. So from here, it would go to council for first reading if they do decide to deny. Or actually, there would be no further reading. It would be denied at that point in time that they pass that resolution. Um, and I'm not aware legally that there's anything that you can do beyond that. Now, that being said, this whole application was brought about through a community complaint, and then it was investigated by staff, and then we came to the determination that no planning approval or planning process was ever went through to allow this to be there. Um, if it's denied, it would have, effectively have to be removed immediately, but, I mean, our bylaw enforcement could perhaps allow some grace operationally and not do it, you know, the more, the next morning after council passes that resolution. But there would be, um, the operators would be compelled to remove the use, um, in a short period of time after, if council were to, um, endorse our recommendations, so.
Thank you for that, David. Um, should planning board this evening decide to, um, support staff's recommendation, um, either way, as it, as we prepare to move this on to council, could I ask that we do get further legal clarification around a timeframe that this, um, this structure could remain in its current location, um, in terms of a transition period? Just, I know you were saying, we're not sure legally, like, maybe we could find that out by the time it goes to council. I mean, it probably won't affect any decisions this evening. I'm just wondering if that's a possibility?
Uh, through the chair, an alternative could be that operationally we could pause on bringing the resolution forward to council, if it's made known that Planning Board has recommended that it be denied. But again, we don't know what council's going to say, right? Um, but that's just a thought, that we could put a pause on bringing that resolution forward. But again, that's presupposing what council may or may not say, and I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate, so. Uh, ju- it was just a thought, so.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wondered, um, do the organizers or do we know the organizers of the, of the service, have they investigated other locations? Um, it seems to me that that, that particular location is pretty, pretty central. I mean, you don't have to go too far, uh, or along the royalty mall. Uh, on the other side of, of the parking lot, there's literally no residential. There is a significant building, a large apartment building, but for the most part, it's, it's commercial. And I, I just wondered if that might be, uh, an alternative. I, I mean, I'm, I'm prepared to support the, uh, the recommendation, but I just wondered if we, if we need to, uh...
No, I'm sorry. I, I can, I'm sorry, we... But I'm sorry that that's not the process we follow, so I, I, I can answer that question as the chair of the committee. I appreciate that you have information, but tonight is not, is not the platform for that. Right. Yep. So, um, Paul, I thank you for your question, and although it is a great question, it's, um, it doesn't pertain to our decision-making. We, we are here before us on an application for a site-specific exemption for this particular area. Whether or not the, um, organize, organizers have, um, explored other options, you can either find some of that information in the report, or it's not really for us to discuss as we deliberate this decision.
So I'm given to understand then that the organizers have not, they, they must be aware of the fact that a lot of this legwork and planning has, has gone on. Have they not made any overture to, to the city, uh, regarding an alternate, uh, location?
No. Um, David, you can clarify that, but it's to my understanding that they are aware of staff's recommendation, and, um, they have not, um, offered any more information to staff on, on what they, um, plan to do or not to do. David, is there anything else you want to clarify?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, um, the applicants have not approached us or provided any ideas for an alternative location at this point in time. They are aware of the recommendation that was coming forward, so, uh, but they haven't proposed any alternative suggestions, so, yeah.
Thank you. Um, go ahead, Bobby.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I would assume things like hours of operation and things like that are, have also been, are not part of this vote tonight in our recommendation.
You're correct. We, in terms of site-specific exemptions, um, there's no development agreements, there's, there's nowhere that we could put in parameters to change the existing way they run their operation. Um, so it's either a yes to site-specific or no to site-specific, is my understanding. David can clarify that if, um, if he has, wants to add to it.
Yeah, through the chair, Bobby, that's correct, that this is just a vote on the site-specific. Um, hours of operation, like, the only thing that I can think about is any other applicable law, like, our, our nuisance bylaw would speak to quiet hours between, I think, eleven PM and seven AM. But, um, we don't have any business licensing or licensing process that would compel them to limit their hours of operation that I'm aware of, so, yeah.
And for that reason, I'll be supporting the staff's recommendation.
Any other questions? Um, Counselor Beck or Sin?
I, I think Sin would have to hand up first while we, while he was.
No, Counselor Beck, you can, you can go ahead. I'll ask.
Okay. Um, I've, uh, I guess I've had a lot of, um, like, I guess, consternation over this whole situation. I've, I have great admiration and respect for the work that the Sun Hills have done. I have, uh, a high degree of respect for the Lions Club for coming in and jumping on board the way they did, and for the way the community volunteers have, um, gotten in behind it. Um, when I, in saying that, when I look at the totality of this, um, I would have to go with the, um, professional staff's recommendation and support that at this point. Um, I do hope that at some point down the road, we are able to come up with something that can work, uh, because I don't want to see this valuable work disappear. Um, but, uh, at this particular point in time, I'm going to be supporting the professional staff's recommendation, and, uh, and, uh, hopefully we can, uh, find a new path forward going through, into the future and see if we can find somewhere to, uh, provide support for the vulnerable people and continue to progress from down to date, uh, because it's valuable and, uh, see a place for it in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beck, for that. Over to you, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is a question for David. Uh, David, um, is this, uh, what is the, like, I know this, this is not the first time the various, this variance application is before the planning board. How many times this application has been, has been presented to the, to the planning board?
Um, thank you for that question, Sin. I can take a stab at that first. So this is not a variance application. This is for site-specific, and it's the first time that this application for this particular area, as far as I'm know, is before us. And, uh, because the prior history was the previous, um, staff management had given them permission under pilot without, um, the research involved to see that it wasn't a permitted use. David, if you can add to that, go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair, Sin. So clarification on a couple of things. One, this only went to planning board previously as a report for public, request for public consultation. That was back in May, so we provided a report to initially request that they go to a public meeting. Um, otherwise, there was no prior applications made that the planning board saw. And to echo the chair, yes, this is, this isn't a variance. It's a site-specific exemption request under the existing zoning. So in essence, it's a form of zoning bylaw amendment on a site-specific basis. And what brought this about was, um, about three, going on three years ago now, um, previous management was contacted by the community organizers, and they were told that, uh, the use did not require a building permit, and therefore they could proceed, but there was no, uh, follow-up provided at that time to verify that the zoning actually didn't allow for the use. So it was an oversight on the part of staff at that time, uh, and the organizers took that to mean that they could proceed, and hence, uh, why we are, uh, here today, uh, discussing, um, the zoning aspect, which was never properly addressed in the past, so, yeah.
Right. Thanks, David, and thanks, Madam Chair. I, I misspoke there. I meant site-specific amendment. I wasn't sure if this is the first, because, you know, I, I was under the impression this is perhaps the second time this application is, is presented to the board. Um, one thing, you know, I mean, there is one aspect, which is the legality. The other aspect is, is, is the morality side here. I mean, we understand, and I totally understand how, you know, this is not at all, um, consistent with the existing, you know, existing provisions of the bylaw. Uh, and then the morality side is, well, you know, we do have food insecurity, and we do have people who actually access these, uh, community fridges. Now, I just want to know from David, like, when was it first, uh, and remind me, I think this must have been discussed before, remind me, when was it first discovered, uh, that this fridge is, you know, in this particular site, uh, without any permission?
Uh, thanks for your question, Sin. Um, this was discovered by a, um, formal community complaint from, uh, residential complaint, which then the planning department, um, through their bylaw enforcement officers, um, did some research on it. I'd say that was approximately six months ago. Yep. And David, again, if you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, Sin, it was, uh, a complaint was initially, I think, formally received back in February. Um, we, I think, caught wind of it informally in late December, but there, we didn't have a formal complaint until sometime in the month of February. And as the, uh, Chair Yankoff alluded to, we, our bylaw enforcement officers ended further research, and we came to the conclusion that there was no formal planning permission in place to allow for the use, uh, which is why we're, we're sitting here today, uh, discussing the matter, so.
Okay. Thanks, David. And now, a- as I said, we don't have any, anything in the bylaw, existing bylaw, that actually supports a community fridge establishment. Am I correct on that?
Um, thanks for that question. No, what we don't have in our bylaw is to support a site-specific exemption like this in this current location that is zoned parking. Um, as for a structure like this, there are permitted areas that would be as of right. And David, if you could define maybe, um, those, not without putting you on the spot?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, Sin, um, I'll just ver- clarify, um, the zoning, uh, we kind of came to the conclusion here that the zoning, um, the use doesn't maintain the intended purpose of the zoning, and that there was overarching land use impacts at play that were, uh, too hard to ignore. And given that, it's not to say that there aren't zones in the city that would allow for this as a community service use. So, as mentioned just across the road, and I'll highlight here, the Lions Club property located here, which is in the MUC zone, the MUC points to the institutional zone, which does have a couple of land use, defined land uses in it, which you could cross-apply to this use, and you could, you could make the interpretation, uh, that a community fridge could be permitted as of right within the MUC zone, also the institutional zone. And I believe there's one other zone that points to the institutional zone as well. So there are certainly a number of possible candidate sites in other areas of the city where the, um, the community group would not have to go through a Planning Act approval process, like what they're attempting to here for this particular site.
Uh, thanks, David. This, this is great clarification. So there is, uh, there are quite a few candidate, you know, possible sites where this could be moved, right?
Uh, yes, that's correct. And one of them being potentially right across the road, uh, just, just as a possibility, yeah.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Go ahead, Lee.
Um, I guess at the end of the day, the building is illegal, right? It has to be moved. Um, I would support staff's recommendation, but I would also wish to, that the, um, the...
I would support staff's recommendation, but I would also wish to, that the, the group, the fridge group, would have some consultation with the city as to another location, maybe some help with that, and an adequate amount of time to move it. Not as of next week, but maybe an adequate amount of time.
Thank you for that, Lee. That path forward is, is challenging, and, because again, we are, we are recommending board, which then moves on to council. So I think what you're saying could be a discussion that council could debate that evening, and then give some direction to staff to have that suggestion, but I don't think it's, it's part of the platform this evening. Now, David, if you want to correct me.
No, that's fine.
Or not, go ahead.
Through the chair, no, no correction, but you're right, council has an opportunity to debate this if we go next week. I'll also mention that if the use isn't removed right away, that the bylaw enforcement would likely move towards issuing a notice, and through that process, they would usually provide at least a minimum of 30 days for compliance. So we never want to move to enforcement if we can avoid it, but you could say there's almost like a built-in grace period in that process anyway, so I won't say anything further, and I would leave it to council to debate when we get there.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you for that. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, then we, we have a recommendation from the department to encourage the planning board to recommend to council to deny the request to allow for site-specific exemption in the parking lot as it pertains to the unaddressed property identified as PID 3581, 358218, that would allow for a community fridge as a permitted accessory use on the subject property, whereas a community fridge is not otherwise permitted. Do I have somebody that would move that, move by Lee, seconded by Paul? So the resolution is on the floor. Is there any questions on the resolution?
Question.
Okay, okay. Question called. All those in favor of staff's recommendation to move on to council, to deny? Okay. Counselor Beck and Sin?
In favor.
In favor.
Okay, so that's unanimous, and I appreciate that. And this will move on to council, to our monthly meeting of council next Tuesday. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our third item on the agenda. That is 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID 396937. And again, over to our manager of development planning, David Gundrum. Over to you again. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just before you begin, I do have to, I have a family function that I have to attend here, and unfortunately, I have to leave the meeting here. I'm wondering, you know, this will come to a vote. Am I able to cast my vote before I go? Because I do have some opinions on this, but am I able to do that?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, no. Votes cannot be cast until, until it's debated and.
Yeah, it's.
So, yep. So that can't happen.
Okay, I'll stick around as long as I can, and if I, if I have to, if I'm not here when we call the vote, you'll know why.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Over to you, David.
Okay, I'll try to be quick here. So this application was before planning board at the last meeting. I'll just provide a very quick overview again. So this is a site-specific exemption request for the R2 zone to allow for an automotive repair shop on property addressed as 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID 396937, to contain an automotive repair shop within an existing single-story building. It would be a conversion of the existing light industrial building, which has, up until this point in time, functioned as a heating and cooling business, or heating and plumbing business, rather. Subject property is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Rawdon Avenue and Dartre Drive. It's located within the R2 zone adjacent to established residential uses, and again, contains the existing single-story double-bag garage, or shop building, which has been the site of a plumbing and heating business for many years through a legal non-conforming use status. Legislative requirements, on June 27th, council approved request to proceed to public consultation. On June 28th, written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meters, 34 letters were sent, and in total, two responses were received, both expressing opposition to the application from abutting neighbors. On July 18th, planning board passed a motion to recommend approval of the application. However, staff had brought the application back to planning board to seek clarification on the proposed resolution for council that was previously drafted ahead of the July 23rd meeting, out of some concern that members of planning board had expressed. I'll just skip over the overview and analysis, because this was already made known to members of the board at the last meeting. Again, the recommendation was for planning board to recommend to council to approve the request for the automotive repair shop to be added as an additional permitted use on the subject property. And I'll just leave up on the screen here, this was the draft resolution that staff had put together to provide to council ahead of their last council meeting, and I'll just read it out for clarification, that council approved the request for site-specific exemption in the low-density residential R2 zone of the zoning and development bylaws that pertains to 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID number 396937, to allow for the existing building, 325 square meters on the subject property, to be used as an automotive repair shop, and that an automotive repair shop be added as an additional permitted use to the zoning that applies to the subject property. As a condition of a future required change of use permit, this development will be subject to development agreement to be entered into with the city of Charlottetown to help mitigate and control for operational impacts from the use. And that last clause in the draft resolution was crafted by staff in response to some discussion that was had at the last planning board meeting. So again, this application, we already had a resolution passed, motion passed by a planning board to indicate to council to approve the request. And again, this is, we've circled back tonight just to get some clarity on what planning board really specifically wants to see in that resolution to council, so that we get it right, and we, it's consistent with what members of the board want to see council see when they get to it. So I'll leave it at that and turn it back over to the chair for any, any questions, so.
Thank you very much, David, for that. I'll just open it up to the floor. Any questions? Counselor McKay.
Thank you. And yes, we did defer it. I think my intent was, I was hoping to actually see how some of the concerns that were brought forward by the residents were going to be addressed, and I appreciate your, your situation with this. And in the shortcoming, it talks about the proposed use has potential to create noise and vibration impacts. I think when you're operating a garage, it's not a potential, it's, it's going to be an issue with that. And I have heard from other residents who are not really supportive of, of any more impact. They've already lived with a site-specific exemption there for a long time, with the hope that eventually it would certainly not grow in the impact that it would have in the community. So for those reasons, I won't be able to support staff's recommendation at this time.
Thank you for that, Counselor McKay. Go ahead, Bobby.
Thank you, Chair. David, I was just. What is the definition of an automotive repair shop? What does that mean?
Through the chair, we don't, so, that explicit term automotive repair shop doesn't actually show up in the glossary for the zoning bylaw. There is another related definition that you could transpose this use to. I don't have it in front of me. But we don't have an actual explicit term for that as it's written in the resolution and the, in the bylaws that exist today.
So in terms of the previous use, the heating and plumbing, that would be, am I right in assuming that that probably was more retail, like people going in there to, to look for parts or talk to certain people?
Through the chair, there, there would be a bit of that, but we're of the understanding that it's functioned as a, more like a mini storage warehouse, so like a contracting business contractor, they do site, site calls out during the day, they respond, they do service calls, and they park their vehicles on-site when they're not using them. They have a supply of parts and service materials that they keep on-site, but the actual work they do is off-site. So it's just kind of like a home base location for them. Whether, again, I've never shopped there, but whether, over the years, they've had people being able to come in and out and look at different parts and pieces of equipment, I, I don't know, perhaps, but the general intent was it functioned as like a mini garage warehouse for off-site, off-site service calls, is my understanding, so.
Right. But now there will undoubtedly be work done there.
Yes, it's, it's, it's defined as an automotive center, so although we don't have a definition for that, which is a bit perplexing on how we can recommend it, and a, and a follow-up question from yours to David is, if we don't have that definition in the zoning and development bylaw for automotive, how can that be even considered as a permitted use? Thanks.
Through the chair, that's an excellent question. So I have the bylaw up in front of me here. The way that we've worded automotive repair shop, that word repair shop, that doesn't explicitly show up, but what we do have is what's called an automotive service station, which is much more broad. And I can read it out here if the chair, okay. So the way that this is defined, automotive service station means an establishment where gasoline, oil, grease, antifreeze tires and accessories for motor vehicles are stored and kept for sale, and, and this would relate to the use as being proposed here, and where repairs of automobiles and trucks not exceeding one and a half ton capacity, including alignment, muffler, automotive glass, transmission repair, upholstery shop, tire stores and car washes. It says this use may also be connected with convenience store. And that mentions that automobile, automobile body shop is a separate use. So what's being proposed here would technically slide under the explicit definition of automobile service station, but some of the activities described here are not things that are intended, like we, there's not going to be the sale of gasoline or oil or, or materials like that, is our understanding. It's really just core automotive repair, which does fit under this definition.
So David, if we do accept staff's recommendation to support this, because the definition is so broad, they could probably do the purchase of, and the sale of gasoline and oil and convenience. Is that correct?
Through the chair, we've tried to be a bit more, I guess, direct and explicit by, again, automotive repair shop is not explicitly defined as its own term, but there's a very closely related term that's much more broad here. There's no intention for this to become a gas station, no intention for it to become some kind of accessory retail use where you have a convenience store. That's not what the applicants intend. It's purely just as a mechanic's garage to repair vehicles, and that's, that's it, is what they intend. So whether we could maybe wordsmith this a bit, that it excludes those other uses that are spoken to under that blanket definition, we could, we could possibly do that, so. If there's concerns about this morphing into something else in the future that it's not intended to be, based on what the applicants are actually asking for, so.
Go ahead, Rosemary.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify that when a property is a legal non-conforming zoning, that when that property changes hands, that it's supposed to revert back to what the original zoning was? Is that correct?
No. What, what they have is, if a property is sold, the legal non-conforming use goes with the property, and the new property owners have up to six months to continue the legal non-conforming use. If they don't, then it does then revert back to its original land use. Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Beck, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Any questions?
I just wanted to re, I'm, well, I'm not a question, but I just wanted to reiterate my feeling that when we have these legal non-conforming establishments that have been in place, I don't think we should be looking in predominantly residential areas, I don't think we should be looking at adding usages to them. If anything, I think we should just be looking at the maintenance of them. I mean, they have the, the right and the, and really, I think it makes sense that we allow them to continue because they were established in good faith and whatnot, but I don't, I don't see any value in us adding usages to this. I won't be supporting the motion, and I don't want to see any time put into looking at some kind of mitigating measures or dismal measures or anything like that. I think we should just let it reject the, or deny, deny the permitted use and move on. So that's what I, that's what I'll be voting for, if I have time.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Beck. Sin, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair, I don't.
Okay. If there's no other questions, so the planning and heritage department encourages the planning board to recommend to council to approve the request for site-specific exemption in the low-density residential R2 zone of zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID 396937, to allow for the existing building on the subject property to be used as an automotive repair shop, and that an automotive repair shop be added as an additional permitted use for the zoning that applies to this property. Anyone want to move that resolution?
I would like to move, to deny staff's recommendation to support this site-specific application.
Okay, so instead, we have a resolution proposed by Counselor McKay to not accept staff's recommendation and to actually recommend to council to deny this application. So do I have somebody that would second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Bobby. So the motion on the floor is to not accept staff's recommendation and to, in fact, deny this site-specific application. So do I have any questions on the resolution? Oh, go ahead, Ali.
I have one more question. The body shop part of it, that was a separate entity altogether. You can't use it as a body shop, which means body work on cars.
So right now, the only thing permitted under the site-specific is the actual air, plumbing and, plumbing and heating, so that's why it's here today for, to add to the existing use and build on it. So David, if you have anything more to add to that?
Through the chair, to answer Lee's question, the applicants, they hadn't, they did not indicate to us that they intended to create a, a body shop for body repair work. It was really just like a traditional mechanics repair shop, like doing brake jobs, oil changes, you know, those kind of more typical conventional repairs, transmission work perhaps. But they, at no point did they indicate any addition that they'd be doing body work on vehicles, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'll be supporting the staff's recommendation.
Any other questions? Okay, so the, so the resolution on the floor is to not accept staff's recommendation, recommending to council to not, not accept staff's recommendation to support this site-specific exemption. So all those in favor of not supporting staff's recommendation? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, there's a lot of nots in there.
Yes.
So the original one was to approve the site-specific exemption. The new motion says we are denying staff, we are denying staff, we're opposing or whatever, voting against staff's recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, so I support.
Okay. And Sin, are you in favor of the resolution on the floor?
I am in support of the resolution on the floor.
Okay. Any, and those opposed? That would be, yep, so one opposed. Okay, so that will move on to council with planning board's recommendation. Thank you very much, folks.
I, I have to check out, Madam.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Counselor Beck.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So moving on to report number four, and that is Sonia, 7 McKinnon Road, PID 374215, request to proceed to public consultation. Over to you, Sonia. Over to you, Sonia.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, and respected members of the board. This is a request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following zoning request. I amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential R2 zone to medium-density residential R3 zone for the property located at 7 McKinnon Road, PID 374215. The purpose of the proposed zoning rezoning is to construct a seven-unit apartment building on the subject property. The subject property is currently vacant and does not contain any buildings or structure. The surrounding neighborhood contains a mix of residential and institutional buildings located in the low-density residential zone, medium-density residential zone, and single-detached residential zone. The abutment properties include multiple residential apartment buildings, mostly occupied by UPI students. The subject property is situated in close proximity to Charletown Park 18th, Charletown Rural High School, and the Royalty Crossing Mall. The property is currently very well-served by public transit, and this development could be considered a transit-oriented development, given the availability of routes is also on a provincial transit route connecting Charletown to Somerside. This is the aerial view of the subject property, and this is the site plan. The proposed seven-unit apartment building would be located on the western side of the property and would be three-story in height with one basement level. The eastern side of the proposed, to be kept as a designated parking space for residents based on the concept plans provided in support of the rezoning, half of the basement floor for the future development would almost be entirely be dedicated to support services for residents such as gym and common spaces. This is the concept floor plans and 3D rendered perspectives. If the proposed rezoning request is approved to proceed to the public consultation phase, this planning and heritage department will notify the public of the future public meeting date, and in accordance with Section 3.10.4 of the zoning and development bylaw, mail notification later will be sent to all owners within 100 meters of the subject property. Here is a quick summary of the attributes. Some of the positive attributes are that the rezoning better enable the facilitation of compact urban form and infill development of medium-density housing to meet future needs. Seven-unit apartments, along with supporting service, will serve the demand of UPI's growing student population. The property is in proximity to many complementary and supporting businesses, services, and amenities. The proposal is close to parks, schools, churches, and public transit, additional density without adversely affecting the existing character of the area, and propose, and the property is in an area that has municipal services. Few shortcomings are that the lack of two access points might be a challenging issue for those coming and going from McKinnon Road due to the volume of traffic on University Avenue, and the proposed development could impact the existing privacy that residents of abutting land users have become accustomed to over time owing to the presence of an empty lot immediately beside them. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend that the city council approve the request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following rezoning request. I amend Appendix 6 zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential R2 zone to medium-density residential R3 zone for the property located at 7 McKinnon Road, PID 374215. This is the end of my presentation. I can take any questions.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, thank you, Sonia, for that. So today, what is upon us for is to accept staff's recommendation to move this on to council for public consultation. We will see this again for further questions that we may get after going through the public consultation process, but today is still a great opportunity to ask questions as well. So I'll open it up to the board, and Rosemary, I believe you had your mic on. Oh, okay. Oh, Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. And I agree, great spot. We need more housing. It is a great location, but I am concerned that I'd love to have the two access points addressed prior to going even public meeting, because I think that's a fire code, or they've moved that they're pushing that a little bit more now, haven't they?
This has been raised by Public Works already, and we only have, I can show you, we only have received a very basic ground floor plan, so there are so much more detail which will be required.
Before going to public meeting, though, will they have that information?
No. If, if it goes to public meeting, and then later on, if it approves, and then if it's, it's on the building permit situation, then there will be more details that would be required.
Sonia, why in the name of time would this go to public consultation before some of these things are addressed? It just seems like a, I feel like we're maybe not following the process correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong, David, but, or Sonia, I'm sorry, that should we not have some of these basic parts of the application before it goes to public consultation to ensure we're not wasting, one, the applicant's time, staff's time for sure, and the public's time?
Through the chair, I would just say that we certainly wouldn't bring it for recommendation without knowing what significant department like Public Works may have to say. Purpose of the public meeting is to solicit the general public's feedback, and councils as well, on the general proposal. There are times where we can do that in the absence of knowing what some of the other departments really have to say on the matter. I think in this case, because much can hinge on what the concept plan may look like, that we would probably pause on, bring it to the public meeting until at least we have those comments back from Public Works, given that it could alter the design conceivably or have impact on the design. So I think we'd want to see that ahead of proceeding with the letters to the public, so.
So perhaps would I ask someone that would want to defer this back to staff, and it would come back to the next planning board meeting at another time? If anyone is thinking that that might be an avenue to go in?
I think that's probably the right, you know, way to move forward, Madam Chair, if I may.
David, if you want to, if you want to share your operational expertise with us, that would be great.
Yeah, well, through the chair, we've deemed that we have enough information that we could advertise for a public meeting, but at the same time, if there's comments pending from Public Works that could impact on what the layout of the site may look like, it's probably prudent that we, we would push pause on, on circulating for a public meeting. That's not to say if we defer tonight, then we have to come back to you again to request that again. So we can try and get that out of the way, at least for the time being, and we will call the public meeting when, when we feel ready to provide, but knowing that we have the permission of the board and council to proceed. But once that's done, we can choose the timing of the meeting based on when we get those comments back, if we feel that we, we need that critical piece to give the whole picture to the public, which I think might be prudent here, given the impact that it could have on the layout, on the potential layout. Because what Public Works has cautioned is that they, they may want to see two access points. They haven't said whether they can absolutely live with one, so it's just a little wrinkle that we have to try to iron out before we, I think that we should iron out before we get to the public meeting.
So if I hear you correctly, staff's recommendation is for the planning board to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation, and then if council supports that, you still won't be proceeding to public consultation until you have these additional questions answered, so that you can present the complete package when you go to, go to the public consultation?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's what we got, folks?
I'll move to support staff recommendation to move this to public.
Okay, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Chris Fournier. So the, the resolution is on the floor to recommend, the department is encouraging the planning board to recommend that city council approve the request to proceed to public consultation with the caveat that by the time they call that meeting, they will have the additional information to add to the public meeting package. So any questions on the resolution? Rosemary?
Modified, oh, sorry. If the resolution should be modified to include what you just stated, so that it's clearly documented in the record?
I don't think there's any harm in modifying that resolution with a slight amendment to just add that piece of information at the bottom of it. Would that be appropriate, David?
Through the chair, could you please repeat that?
So the Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend that city council approve the request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following rezoning request, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential to medium-density residential for the property located at 7 McKinnon Road. And if council does support planning board's recommendation of planning department, that it would also add in that the planning staff would not proceed to public consultation until they had the additional concerns added into the report, so that when you do call out for that public meeting and the requests out to the public, that information will be included in the package. Whew.
Yeah, through the chair, I'm, we're totally comfortable with that, and deem it appropriate, yeah.
Okay, I'm sure that's been recorded, so that's the resolution, moved by Counselor McCabe, and seconded by, was it Chris? So that is on the floor. Any questions on the resolution?
I have, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Sin.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Now, the thing is, you know, that piece of information, I'm not sure how critical that piece of information would be for the council to make a decision whether to send this for public consultation or not. Now, we are recommending the council to go to public consultation and then have the information at later stage. And that, to me, if you have information, if you're making a decision without having a piece of information, then that information is not, perhaps not the deciding factor. Now, if that's not the deciding factor, then why to have a caveat in the resolution? If you want to have the resolution, if you want, if you think that information is valid, then it should be presented to the council before making a decision, not after making a decision. So I don't support this resolution at this point in time.
Thank you for that. I don't even know how to respond to that, so I'm going to hand it over to you, David. I don't even know what that means.
Through the chair, I would interpret, and Sin, you can correct me if I don't have this right, but you're saying that we should exclude that, that caveat piece about the comments from Public Works, that you're of the opinion that it's not?
Yes, David, but, yes, David, but at the same time, you know, if we want to, it might be better just to defer this application and bring all the information to the planning board, or I, planning board, I can, I'm ready to, you know, support this recommendation to the council, but the council should have the information about the, from the Public Works Department before proceeding to the public consultation. So as long as the information is there, it's all fine. If the information is not there, then the council is making a decision based on omission of an information. Does it make sense?
Through the chair, that, that makes sense to me, Sin, in a way, but on the, on the other hand, there, there's no recommendation regarding the application that'd be coming forward to council until we've concluded the public consultation piece, so there's still much time in hand that we could work with Public Works to clarify their concerns and get resolution on that. We can either do that ahead of calling for the public meeting, or we could proceed with the public meeting if we have clearance to, and we would certainly push pause thereafter before we bring any recommendation forward back to the planning board and to council. So like, there's a lot of steps in our process, and sometimes it's beneficial that there are, such as in this case, because we have outstanding concerns that we don't have absolute clarity on. So that would be my response to that, Sin, is that we do have a complete application in terms of ability to review, which is why we're, we brought this forward tonight. However, we're outstanding some comments from Public Works or clarification that may all, it could have impact on what the concept looks like and what we would present for a recommendation and also to a public meeting, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so if, supposedly, and this is very hypothetical, if the Public Works Department says there are concerns, and the council acts or the planning board acts on it and decides, oh, we, we just deny the application, it won't go for public consultation. Am I right on that?
Through the chair, that'd be correct. We wouldn't bring, there'd be no point in bringing it forward if Public Works can't grant, grant road ac, proper road access, and there'd be no point in moving it forward in the current format, yeah.
Absolutely. So we are assuming, you know, that the council would take it to public consultation, you know, without having a piece of information when it's relevant to this application from Public Works Department. So as long as, you know, I'm only looking at the technical side. I think the information or, you know, a written suggestion from the public works should be there before the council make any decision to go to public consultation.
Thanks, Sin, and the, the resolution is on the floor, but as a sidebar, like, this is, this is actually a very interesting situation that I don't know if we've ever been in before, because if all of a sudden council approves to go to public consultation, but then in the meantime, the staff have discovered that, that it, that the application can't go to public consultation, council through a resolution has already said it's going to public consultation, which would mean it would have to come back through the channels to pull that application, or would it?
Through the chair, it would have to come back to planning board in that case, yeah.
Okay, there is a resolution on the floor to support staff's recommendation with the caveat in there, and it was moved by Counselor McCabe, and it was seconded by Chris Fournier. So if there's no more questions on that resolution, we can, I guess, proceed with that resolution. So all those in favor? Those opposed? Sin, you're opposed, right?
Opposed, yeah.
Pardon me?
Yes, I'm opposed, Madam Chair.
Okay, so one opposed. Were you opposed as well? And Bobby, were you opposed? No, you weren't. So you? Okay, so Rosemary and Sin are opposed to this resolution, and the remainder of you folks are in favor. So this will proceed to council. We're holding you to it, David. Better not have it back here with all this confusion. Thank you for that. Great conversation anyways, folks. So our final item on the agenda this evening, and we are back to our management of development planning, and it is 33 Morrow Drive, PID 366997. Over to you, David.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll just note that I'm standing in for one of our senior planners, Michael Fraser, tonight, who authored the report that's in the agenda package, so I'm just presenting on his behalf for the application. So this is a request regarding property addressed as 33, 33 Morrow Drive, PID number 366997. Request to proceed to public consultation to rezone the property from R2 to R3T to allow for a proposed stacked townhouse development. Subject property is shown here on the screen at the northwest corner of the intersection of North River Road and Morrow Drive, and it currently contains a single detached dwelling. Again, the rezoning request is intended to facilitate development of a stacked townhouse proposal. having five units on the site, whereas the property has been the site of a single-detached dwelling for many years. Uh, the following image shows a proposed concept rendering of what the stacked townhouse development, uh, would look like on the subject property. And as mentioned prior, the property is a corner residential lot at the northwest corner of Morrow Drive and North River Road, located within the R2 zone adjacent to established residential uses. Subject property contains a single-story, single-detached dwelling with attached garage that has been present on the site for many years, and the site is surrounded predominantly by lower-density residential uses in the R1S, R1L, R2, and R2S zones, which, uh, are, form the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, with respect to the official plan, official, the official plan supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for housing choices. Uh, the OP states that a variety of housing choices within neighborhoods are important as they provide options for the needs of different people at various stages of their lives. Uh, the applicable sections of the OP that speak to the application, uh, as found in the planning report, includes sections 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3. Um, the subject property provides an opportu- will provide, would provide an opportunity for higher density than what is currently allowed under existing zoning in the R2. Uh, due to the location of the subject property within an existing neighborhood, it is important for the planning process in this case to thoughtfully consider the context of the surrounding uses and seek feedback from those who may have potential concerns. Uh, planning staff are of the opinion that the applicants have provided sufficient information and detail such that the rezoning request, uh, can proceed to public consultation to gauge the thoughts, opinions, feedback, and direction of both council and the residents of Charlottetown. And as such, uh, planning staff are recommending, uh, the Planning Heritage Department encourages that the Planning Board recommend to counsel to proceed to public consultation, uh, for the request to amend Appendix A, future land use map of the city of Charlottetown official plan from low-density to medium-density residential, and a request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the city of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential R2 to the medium-density residential R3T zone for the property located at 33 Morrow Drive, PID 366997. Uh, so that is a summary of the request and the proposed development, and I'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for that report. Um, so, as David pointed out, the staff is recommending, um, the Planning Board accept their recommendation to, um, proceed to public consultation and on to council, of course. Any questions on either moving it on to council or the actual proposal that's upon us here this evening? Sin, any questions for, from you?
Uh, no questions, Ma'am Chair.
Okay. Does anyone want to put a resolution on the floor? Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Jackie. So, the question is on the, the resolution is on the floor to accept staff's recommendation to, uh, proceed to public consultation and, and on to council first. So, question called. All those in favor? Um, Sin?
I'm in favor, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, that is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. So, that concludes the, um, our reports for this evening, and our last item of business is to ask for a motion to, well, an introduction of new business, I suppose, first, and if not, we'll move on to, um, um, motion to adjourn. Okay, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Jackie. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.